Now, if you'll please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is to receive the proposed or unamended agenda. Is there a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda's approved. Public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on any item that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone online or on phone? Hearing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. Next item is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures total $327,010.99. The larger departments through Sheriff's Department are with $136,680. Health Department, $19,638. Conservation, $20,044. And finally, Secondary Roads, $66,252. Everything looked normal.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Jamison.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Item number four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. All of our snowplow trucks are out sanding the paved roads. They've all been sanded now. It sounds like the precipitation is picking up for maybe a few hours until about noon. We will be out keeping our eyes on the road the entire day until 5:00 PM this afternoon, sanding as needed and keeping the roads clear. I did want to mention that I would like to have a public meeting at the end of March in the Dunkerton area concerning the East Spennington Road Bridge. Several years ago, we had a similar public meeting, and this is to discuss the fate of the East Spennington Road Bridge. And if you recall, this is the bridge that was further damaged by a utility contractor's truck as it drove over the roadway. We closed the bridge, I think it was in 2018 in the fall, and it's been closed ever since then. So the bridge has just been sitting there. We have barricades on both sides of the bridge and on both sides of the road, obviously. I would like to remove the bridge. It was suggested by you, the supervisors, that we have another meeting when it was timely after COVID, to have another meeting to tell the public, the neighbors, that we were indeed removing the bridge. And I feel like we're probably, it's about time we do that towards the end of March. And I was considering the end of March at the Dunkerton Public Library. I will get with you all your schedules and probably Tuesday and Thursday of one of the last two weeks in March. And we would notify the public and just alert them to the fact that I would like to remove the bridge, and they would be invited, and then we could give them more information on what would happen in the future about the removal and demolition and that type of thing. Are there any questions about that or?
How long has it been closed?
I want to say it's been closed about four years now, almost four years.
Have you had any comments or received any comments from the public or neighbors out there?
To be honest, I don't think we've received any comments, at least in the last, it's been probably three years ago since we've received any comments.
I think it's a good idea and look forward to it, I guess, having that meeting with them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got three items that I want to talk to you about very briefly. I've sent emails on two of them, and then Amanda sent an email yesterday regarding the third. And I'll start with that third one, and that is the state is using Recovery Act funds to benefit law enforcement for a $1,000 retention bonus. She sent you that email notifying you that Mike and I are both working on that. I met with my staff this morning regarding that, and there are a couple glaring omissions that I want to make the board aware of, and that is it only addresses peace officers. So any other staff member that worked arm-in-arm with our peace officers, sworn certified peace officers during the time of COVID, that were committing to the same hours, committing to the same rugged schedule, are being auspiciously left behind. And what I don't want is a chasm or rift in my staffing because there are those that are going to get recognized for their efforts and then those that are going to be forgotten. What makes or adds injury to insult or insult to injury is that the state correctional officers are in fact being recognized. Someone else that's been left behind in this is public health. They were working at least as laboriously as law enforcement, and they are not listed in there as well. So there is a good opportunity for us to consider those that aren't being recognized by this state effort. And it just simply is omission on behalf of the governor of people that she forgot that were committing.
Is she being contacted by others, groups and individuals?
It's a blanketed approach. Those that are teachers that are being recognized are going through the Department of Ed. Law enforcement's going through the law enforcement academy. Wherever you're being certified through, DHS is doing certain certifications. So it's a weird kind of shotgun approach to how it's being managed for these retention bonuses. But again, there's huge gaps in personnel that were there, ever present, that are not being recognized. So I'm actually speaking today on behalf of those that were there that are not being recognized. And so maybe there is an opportunity to utilize some of those funds to recognize some of those folks that were within the county doing the same thing that law enforcement was doing that unfortunately are going to be the only ones that are going to be able to take advantage of this.
How many of your personnel are going to benefit from this?
Sixty-eight.
Okay.
Yeah, of 140 staff. And I think that's wrong. Secondly, I shot an email to you last week. I've heard nothing back regarding vehicles. Those are the vehicles that are auspiciously not involved in the rotation, specialty vehicles like SWAT, jail vehicles that we normally purchase out of jail commissary. And what we're trying to look at is when Supervisor Little talked about perhaps purchasing vehicles during budget out of ARP funds because law enforcement vehicles are authorized to be purchased that way. Is there a way to leverage ARP funds through one-time monies that we don't have to or that wouldn't necessarily impact that process of every five years or every 130,000 or whatever? And we do have vehicles that fit that need, and my chief deputy was right to bring that to our attention, that there would be some vehicles that would meet that criterion. In fact, I don't know if you are aware or not, there are other agencies within the county, there are other departments within the county that benefit from this as well. We just gave a pickup truck to Rory's staff. Right now, there's a Durango that is being driven by maintenance, and we have a Tahoe in this fleet that we are recommending that we could swap out that Durango for a Tahoe with lower miles. So maintenance, so that secondary roads or the engineering staff could benefit from this as well, and we can still continue to keep that fleet up to date. So there is some benefit to contemplation of how that vehicle fleet can be moved forward and still move funds out of the tax base while still being able to impact positively. We are using commissary funds now more than ever for building maintenance things. And in fact, I've got Youngs over there right now replacing sewer pipe on commissary funds. So we're trying to maximize that, and if we move vehicles out of commissary to be able to do that, that's fantastic, too. So I think that's another great contemplation of something that you should take a look at. And then finally, obviously, is jail renovation. And the more I think about that, I know you don't like the price tag for staffing, but how ridiculous are we not to look at building? Construction prices continue to go up. If you don't build it now, my jail's already full. We've got people out of county right now. That number's continued to rise. There are bills right now in the state talking about trying to mandatorily sentence every simple misdemeanor to two days in jail. We don't have the staff and the space to be able to hold what we've got right now on forcible felons, let alone two-day misdemeanor offenders. So even if we don't staff it, if you build it now and then leave it to us to try and figure out staffing models down the road, I still think that that's a viable way to spend those funds and save taxpayer money down the road. So I think those are the three things that I would like you to continue to consider. So that's my three thoughts and the three projects that we still have that we're working on right now. Any questions for me?
None at this time, and I will get back to you. Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials in the room? Anyone online? Hearing none, I guess we'll move on to item five, minutes approved for February 15th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We have noted in item six that they'll be budget for fiscal year '23 a little later this morning. Item seven is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for those items?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or any items on that consent agenda that someone would like removed or discussed? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Jamison.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Item eight, contract and agreements. Resolution that the agreement received from Clap Saddle Garber and Associates in Cedar Falls, Iowa, for a monument preservation and on-call surveying services for calendar year '22 at various locations in Blackhawk County with a bid of $10,100 at varying hourly rates and mileage detailed in the agreement, that it's approved and the chair to sign as recommended by Kathryn Nicholas, County Engineer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kathy, would you like to explain this and perhaps Mike?
This is our annual surveying contract. As you know, I've told you that when we resurface roadways, we are required by the Code of Iowa, good practice that we reestablish any monuments that we may, these would be section corners, corners, et cetera, that we disturb during our paving and milling and paving process. We no longer have a surveyor on staff, so we have now just gone to an annual basis to contract out this work. This would span two fiscal years because we do do it on a calendar year basis. We have budgeted for this work, and I would ask that you allow us to proceed with this contract with Clap Saddle Garber.
And I believe, Mr. Tryon, you reviewed this. Were there some changes that were made or that you felt were necessary?
Yeah, reviewed the contract, changed the limited liability provision in it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Kathy or Mr. Tryon as well? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Jamison.
Chelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Other business. Resolution that the tax sale certificate assignment for property at 1320 David Street, Waterloo, Iowa, parcel 8913-14-402-25 pursuant to Iowa Code 446.31, and agrees to pay delinquent taxes of $4,797.54 along with the $10 assignment fee be approved, and said certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Three Stooges LLC requested by Chris officials as recommended by Rita Schmidt, County Treasurer.
So moved.
This is a property on David Street. It's a dilapidated building. The requester of this assignment is planning on refurbishing that site across from his business, and he's willing to pay the full taxes that are delinquent. So I am fully in preference to have that assigned if possible.
I believe, Rita, you'd made a comment, I think there was earlier, the amount was higher, like 5,500 or 5,600. But that wasn't what was delinquent, is that?
When I first proposed the amount, I had included the March '22 taxes, which I cannot do, so that was reduced off of this. There was a prior interest in the property earlier, but he was doing a compromise, and we had received a full offer, and the other gentleman had backed out then.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rita? There's been a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second for this resolution? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote again, Mr. Jamison, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item B, resolution that the tax sale certificate assignment for vacant lot located in Waterloo, Iowa, parcel 8912-30-309-006 pursuant to Iowa Code 446.31, and agrees to pay delinquent taxes of $749 along with a $10 assignment fee be approved, and said certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to 112 Randolph LLC, and I believe the gentleman's name is Tremont Allen as recommended by Rita Schmidt, Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Rita, would you like to address this?
Same situation. This is a vacant lot, and I'm not sure what his plans are, if he obtains deed to it, but he's willing to pay the full amount that's delinquent, and I recommend that it be approved.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rita? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Jamison.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item C, resolution that the tax sale certificate assignment for two vacant lots located in Waterloo, Iowa, parcels 8912-19-351-014 and parcel 8913-24-408-006, and property located at 411 Brattonburg, Waterloo, Iowa, parcel 8913-23-252-009 pursuant to Code 446.31, and agree to pay delinquent taxes of $7,059.74 along with a $30 assignment fees be approved, and said certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Cytus Cultivation LLC requested by Chris Newhouse as recommended by Rita Schmidt, County Treasurer. Is there a motion?
Or we can wait for Rita to comment?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Rita, would you like to comment on this as well?
This individual or this company has come in with a request for the two vacant lots and also the house at 411 Brattonburg. The letter that was presented to you guys stated what their plans are. The house is vacant. As far as I know, there is no one, the owner does not live there. And the two vacant lots, I'm sure that they are probably buildable, so I don't have a lot of input other than the letter that was given to the board.
Thank you.
And they're willing to pay the full amount again on what delinquent taxes are due.
Any other questions for Rita? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, Mr. Jamison, please.
Chelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item D, resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment with ARPA funds submitted by Al Yu, Information Technology Director, for the sum of $5,360 to push purchase eight Canon DRS-150 document scanners from CDW.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Al, would you like to speak to this?
Al Yu, IT Director. We have an increased amount of digitizing of documents in the county, and as I've looked at the departments, I've noticed that a lot of the scanners are just failing or they're out of date, so this addresses that issue.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, Mr. Jamison.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item E, motion to approve the personnel requisition for a security administrator position full-time effective February 22nd, 2022, as recommended by Al Yu, Information Technology Director.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Al, would you like to address this?
Yeah. So as you know, we have had a FTE vacancy for this fiscal year for a network technician. After finishing my assessment of the county infrastructure, I determined that the county needs a security admin instead of a network technician. So I worked with HR to create this brand-new position, and we've created a new job description that we have provided to all the supervisors, along with the salary information. Do you guys have any questions regarding this position?
No, I thank you. I was going to say, my question might be just for the benefit of everyone, what the security administrator position would do.
Sure, sure. So as we know, in IT, it's all about security these days, so a security admin would basically monitor our network and ensure that we don't have any vulnerabilities or have any potential breaches. It is a industry standard to have security admins. In fact, a lot of other entities have multiple security admins, so I think it's very important that we have someone monitoring this full-time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Al? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, to approve the travel request submitted by Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign $1,058.74 for Charri Gallmeyer and Anna Knapp to attend the Iowa Employment Spring Conference Meeting in Altoona, Iowa for April 6th and 7th, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Amanda, did you want to? No, pretty straightforward. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item G. The time is 9:22, and we are having the hearing on the proposed Blackhawk County budget for fiscal year '23. At this time, we typically do introductions of those online as well as in the room. Do we want to start with the supervisors? Not that we don't own over here, but...
Dan Chelka, County Supervisor.
Linda Layland, County Supervisor.
Chris Schwartz, County Supervisor.
Al Little, County Supervisor.
Now, let's next have the department heads and those in the room maybe identify yourselves.
Rita Schmidt, Treasurer.
Sandy Smith, Recorder.
Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director.
Dr. Niti Saplan, Public Health Director.
Kathy Nicholas, Engineer.
Sheriff Tony Thompson.
Ryan Williams, County Attorney.
Al Yu, IP Director.
Great, thank you. Now for those online. Sorry, I can't see you at the moment, so we're just going to have to... Any department heads or?
Mike Henderson, Director of County Conservation.
Thank you.
Yolanda Lovles, Director of Blackhawk County Government and Bears.
No one else probably wants to do it. I was going to say, the three of you, would you like to identify yourselves? Thank you.
Mike Tryon, Assistant County Attorney.
James Perry, Finance Director.
Tim Jamison, Real Estate Tax Manager. I'm filling in for Auditor Grant Veder who has jury duty this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item two, the presentation by James Perry, Finance Director.
All right. I have a few slides to go through, but this is going to be, like Linda said, the fiscal year '23 budget. I felt overall, we did, we moved through it very quickly, and a lot of good things are coming out of this. So without further ado, get started here. And let me... There we go. So the two largest highlights in this FY '23 budget is going to be the loss of the mental health levy for Blackhawk County citizens. So we are no longer being, no longer levying those dollars, and this was taken over by the state. The second biggest is our debt service tax askings, which is dropping by 24.7%. And this continues to decrease over time pretty rapidly just because we have an aggressive payback approach. The other larger items, the Board of Supervisors are negotiating increased wages for Unit Five employees, and that reflects the higher salaries for FY '23. So we did that in FY '22, so that's going to be absorbed in FY '22 budget, but we had to do one lump, some increase in FY '23 to kind of catch that up. Blackhawk County saw a valuation increase of 6.44%, but the taxable valuations decreased that amount to 3.33% for taxable valuation. The other large factor in this budget is the American Rescue Plan funds, and that helped position the county to complete large capital projects without having to levy for them. In this year's budget, we were able to add three positions. We were able to add a safety coordinator. We were able to add a GIS coordinator as well as a part-time attorney. And this is a nice visual. It gives you a 10-year trend on where our valuations are. As you can see, in fiscal year '15, that was a drop in valuations pretty significantly. Otherwise, we're kind of all over the map for taxable valuations. This year, FY '23, I would like to say we're right in that average range where we would like to be. Here's for the rural portions only, this is a little bit more positive for valuation growth. We're going to be, again, the 3.3% for both rural and countywide. So again, this is going to be a little bit more average where we're going to be seeing typically for every year. As far as the levy rates, the urban rate paid by the residents in incorporated areas is going to decrease from $6.38 down to $5.63. The rural-only levy is increasing by six cents. That's $3.47 up to $3.53. And while the combined rural and urban, which is going to be paid by the residents in the unincorporated areas, is decreasing by 68 cents. So that's going to be $9.85 in FY '22, down to $9.17 in FY '23. Here's going to be the tax levy trend for urban, or for the countywide. So again, you're going to see your peaks and valleys kind of up until FY '20. And we wanted to maintain a steady growth for the past three years. With the loss of the mental health as well as debt service, that's kind of plumbing in pretty significantly. So there's a lot of good things there, and really, we're seeing a pretty massive decline this year for FY '23. For the rural tax levy trend, this is a little bit more, less peaks and valleys. We saw a decline from FY '14 to FY '16. And then that trend is moving upward into FY '21. We saw a dip last year and just a slight increase this year. So again, we're trying to make that as even as possible moving into the future years. This is going to be, this is a pie graph to show what makes up that countywide levy. So out of general basic, that's $3.50. That's the vast majority of it. We have general supplemental for $1.83, and then our debt service makes up 30, right around 30 cents, just a little over 30 cents. The unincorporated areas, that includes the rural basic rate, you'll see the rural basic as well as the general basic, they're right around the same. Then again, you have your... your general supplemental and your debt service. For the rural fund, it is primarily made up of rural deputies as well as the funding for the secondary roads. Both of those did have an increase this year. We had an increase for secondary road transfer of $228,593. That's mostly based off valuations. And then we did have, we did see an increase in that Unit 5 rural deputies for $125,309. There was an increase in local option sales tax that we're hopefully planning to receive this fiscal year, or in fiscal year '23, and that does help offset some of those increases. This is just a different pie chart. It's gonna be broken up by program. So Sheriff's Patrol Services makes up 32.4%, and you'll see the vast, the larger portion of this diagram is secondary roads transfer, and that makes up 56.2%. The remaining consolidated other rural services, planning and zoning, and county libraries just make up a little over 5% of that, or 10%, excuse me. So for the expenditure highlight, we have our total budget expenditures of $69,109,101. That is a decrease of 867, a little over 867,000 compared to FY '22. The county continues to see the salary and benefits making up the majority of those expenditures. So in FY '23, we're looking at $37.8 million for salary and benefits, which makes up 54.62%. And those were an increase this year of 1.9 million, or 5.3%. That increase does include the three FTEs, the across-the-board salary increases of 3%, as well as the merit and step increases for union employees. Expenditure highlights by function. Our administration function is increasing by 2 million. Again, these, we had to budget for the ARP expenses. Most of this is coming out of general county management for the ARP funds, so that is why that's seeing such a large increase. Public Safety and Legal Services is seeing an increase of a little over 1 million, and that's primarily due to the salary negotiation. But that's off, that is being offset by the shifting of Consolidated Communications being shifted into a separate fund. And again, the mental health is completely dropping off for the county. County Environment and Education, this increased by $190,000. That was due to various projects with Casey Lake Restoration as well as ARP. Our non-program expenditures, which makes up our long-term debt service as well as our capital expenditures, this is decreasing by $631,000. And really, that's coming from the lower debt service. We're trying to keep our capital expenditures very similar to FY '22, but our debt service is dropping by 1.7 million, and that's including with solid waste, solid waste in E911. For expenditures by service area, you'll notice that Public Safety and Legal Services make up the majority of our expenditures. Our Physical Health and Social Services, as well as roads, roads and transportation make up our second-largest pieces of the pie. And then comes in Administration, Debt Service, Capital Projects, Government Services, and County Environment and Education. So again, these are really just kinda visuals of what goes into our budget and how it's split off to different parts, to different parts of the county. This is another visual. It kinda breaks down expenditures by department. You'll see that the Sheriff's Department is the larger expenditure department within the county. Then we have our Engineers Departments, our Health Departments, our Attorneys, and so on and so forth. So again, it's, these are really just visuals to kinda help let you know where these funds are being expensed. For capital improvement, our capital improvements totaled $966,650 for FY '23. A lot of these items include vehicles that were on rotation, IT hardware and software, maintenance upkeep, asphalt repairs, our Casey Lake restoration. We have commercial chipper and lift station replacement. Moving on to our debt summary, our total outstanding debt at the beginning of FY '23 will be seven, a little over 7.6 million. That is gonna be a decrease of 3.1 million from FY '22, so that's how much we lowered our debt, our outstanding debt this fiscal year. Our outstanding debt will be the 7.6 million. We're gonna, we're gonna pay principal down in the amount of three, a little over 3.1 million for an outstanding debt on July 1 of 2023 of four point, a little, little under $4.5 million. And again, this is not including solid waste in E911 as they, they make their own payments, but I'll, I'll touch on their debt schedule as well. And this is debt by category. Again, this is just a visual of where we hold our debt. So 94.1% of our debt is roads and bridges, and 5.9% is capital improvement. This is what our aggressive payback looks in the next, in the next five years. So in FY '20, in FY '22, FY '23, and they remain similar. It's dropping a little, but it is remaining similar, and you'll see an extreme drop-off next fiscal year in FY '24. And then FY '25 through '28, it kinda fizzles off a little bit more normally, but we will be seeing a pretty drastic decrease next year as well. So this is the debt service for E911 and solid waste. Again, they're gonna see a pretty large decrease after FY '24. That's because one of the, one of the bonds that solid waste has is gonna be fully paid off, and then they each have one after that that, again, is pretty termed out equally. So that brings us out to FY '31 for those payments. For our revenue highlights, our budget revenues is $63,91,836, which is a decrease of 658,000, or 1%. A lot of that is due to the COVID grant revenue declining for FY '23, as well as the mental health levy not being, coming into the county as well. You'll notice that the property tax percentage of that revenue is decreasing from 55.3% in FY '22, and that's, and it's 54.4% in FY '23. So what that means is less money of the, of the sum is coming from property tax and more is coming from other sources. So that's gonna be mostly due to an increase in the backfill ARP funds, and then the, the loss of the mental health levy. So... These are, these are revenues by program area. We have, again, taxes that make up 54.4% of this, of the whole chart here. We have other financing sources at 18.1%, intergovernmental revenue at 18.7. And we have typically our departmental revenues after that, which is gonna be the, the use of money in properties, charges for services, and miscellaneous revenue. Again, this is gonna be just another visual. This is revenue by department. Now, engineer is showing so high because we are still, we're assuming that we're gonna be collecting money from Grundy Road to help pay for that large project, so that's where, that's, engineer is showing so high. But then we have Health Department, Conservation, Attorneys, Sheriffs, Treasurers, and everywhere in between. Moving on to FTEs by department, this is another visual that just kinda tells you where most, where our salary and benefits are being placed within the county. So again, the Sheriff's Department is right in that 140 mark, and then we have the Health Department, Conservation, Treasurers, and Attorney's Office, all within there. So that's just kinda gives you a nice visual of where our employees are located. This is a county FTE trend. So for the past 10 years, we've been trending, well, I guess for, from FY '14 to FY '20, we've trended down pretty significantly. And since FY ' '20, we've hovered right in that 400, 400 employees. These are just gonna be a summary of the levy rates again, but it kinda gives you just a very, I guess, a very blunt picture of where we're at. Our general basic is $3.35, which is no change. Our general supplemental is $1.83, and that's an increase of 3.23%. Our debt service is 30 cents. That is a decrease of 26.95%, which makes our total urban levy rate $6.34, which is a decrease of 11.67%. Our rural rate is $3.53, which is an increase of 1.79%, and combined total is $9.17, which is a decrease of 6.93%. So a lot of these are decreasing, again, just because of the debt service as well as mental health. I wanted to touch on rollbacks as well, because this does play such a significant role for our levies. Residential rollback is 50, a little over 54%. This decreased by a little under 2.3%. So, so that's, that's good for the taxpayers. Ag land and buildings, this increased by over 5%. So when we, when we start looking at the impacts of our levy as well as the rollbacks, you'll notice that ag lands are going up. Our ag property owners' tax bill is going up. But again, that's, that's a lot to do with these rollbacks. That 5% is pretty significant. Commercial and industrial remains at 90%, and multi-residential saw a decrease of 3.75%. So when I, when I talk about the impacts with the rollbacks, residential owners in incorporated areas will pay $54.83 less in FY '23 than in FY '22. Rural residential owners will pay $59.37 in FY '23. And ag property owners will pay $62.78 more in FY ' '23. But again, most of that is due to, due to that rollback. Our levy, our levy increased by 6 cents. So that just kinda shows where, where our citizens are currently at. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
Welcome for any questions.
Any questions or comments? Hearing done. We'll move on to the reading of the Blackhawk County Compensation Board's salary schedule for fiscal year '23. Leave.
Okay, I'll read the Compensation Board's schedule, but I also wanna note, I'll also read what was actually recommended by the Board of Supervisors during the budget deliberations. For county auditor, the Compensation Board recommended $93,046.29, an increase of 4.5%. Supervisors recommended reducing that to $92,044.59, an increase of 3.375%. County Attorney, Compensation Board recommended an increase of 10% to $154,678.25. The Supervisors reduced that to 7.5% or $151,162.83. For the Supervisors, the Compensation Board recommended a 4.5% increase to $43,543.74, or 74 cents. The Supervisors recommended decreasing that to 3.375% or $43,074.97. For the Recorder and the Treasurer both, the Compensation Board recommended a 4.5% increase to $92,911.66. Supervisors recommended decreasing that to 3.375% or $91,911.42. And for the Sheriff, the Compensation Board recommended a 20% increase to $145,053.36. The Supervisors recommended decreasing that to 15% or $139,009.47. Hopefully, I didn't miss any.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, are there any public comments and/or questions regarding this budget for anyone? Anyone online? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the comments by the Board of Supervisors, and I'll start with those online. Mr. Little, is there something you'd like to comment?
You can move on.
Mr. Schwartz?
I think that we did a really great job across all departments and with the board this year of creating a budget that continues to provide high-quality services and even expand those services, while at the same time providing a little bit of property tax relief this year. So I'm really happy with how the budget has gone this year. I thank all the department heads and everybody that worked so hard on this.
Thank you. Mr. Trevelka?
I, this is a good budget. I know there are many times where this board is reluctant to take credit for our budgets, and we just had a snapshot of basically one year. But when you look at our budgets over the years, they've collectively been fantastic budgets that are giving our taxpayers value for what we take from them. The planets have aligned to give us a really good budget. We've had many good things happen. We have the ARP funds. The state took the mental health funding. They're gonna start collecting that. But when we look beyond this year, and we look at the years past, I mean, this board's debt service approach has had a significant impact on our budget. The decisions this board made in regard to country view has had a significant impact on our budget. The reorganization of the Public Health Department has had a significant impact on our budget. Mr. Perry, when did you come onboard? 2020?
Yes.
At that time, we were spending about $240,000 per year in IT contract services. I believe now we're spending nothing.
Starting in FY '23 year, correct?
Big costs for an employee, but we've got a net gain of a couple hundred thousand dollars per year. The action this board has taken now and for the future is promising for our budgets. I venture to say 98 other counties are jealous of the budget we currently have. And this board needs to recognize that and take credit for it, because collectively, we are serving our taxpayers incredibly well, and nobody can deny that. That's all I have to say.
Well, I'll end with, I guess, reiterating some of the points that our supervisors have said, other supervisors had said, and can't thank the staff and the department heads and elected officials, and everyone that's worked on this budget, and the board as well, that's worked on the planning and prioritizing of projects as we work through not only the budget but the ARP fund projects. And I think all of you have heard me say in other meetings, as well as in many conversations, that my thoughts were a little bit different on this year's budget in that I think we used some of our ARPA funds where we perhaps could have used, put those, some of those projects in the fiscal year budget for '23. And, you know, the ARPA funds have certainly opened up so many possibilities for us. We're able to do so many projects with these millions of dollars that we would have had to tax for. So it's really been a blessing. So it's really been a blessing for all of us and a tremendous boost that I'm expecting to see for our economy. But I, I would have liked to seen, I guess, that done, that we'd have shifted some of those dollars um into the fiscal year 23 budget, just for the twofold reason, I guess, because to me it would have more accurately reflected going forward what a typical year looks like for us. But also um the opportunity to have freed up some of those ARPA dollars to use in other projects. And as we see, there's so many needs out there in our communities as well as from the county that early on, I think when we saw that 25 million, we thought, oh my, what will we spend it on? And now I think we're all very comfortable knowing that's, we're going to wish we had more. Uh, we'll go through that 25 million very easily, um, as we see the needs and look at so many of the projects that we have out there. But I can't thank all of the people involved with doing the budget and the ARPA projects enough to say, you know, it's, it's been tough looking at this. It was something so new, um, and like I say, definitely unknown territory for us to have this opportunity. And we've got a lot of difficult decisions, I think, still ahead of us in the next few months that we'll have to make. So um, we know we won't be able to make everyone happy, but we've got to pursue those discussions and, and get moving on that. And looking forward to the space assessment as well as all the projects that many of you have, have put on our list already. So thank you all. Moving on to a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Motion to close the public hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Were there any written comments, Mr.?
There were no written comments.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution that the proposed Blackhawk County budget for fiscal year 23, as published in the county's official newspapers on February 10, 2022, be approved and adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. James, I just had one question. Did both official newspapers do it on the same day?
On the same day.
Great, because I know sometimes that publication date's different for us. Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Mr. Jameson.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item H, resolution that the appropriations be approved at 100% for the Blackhawk County budget for fiscal year 23.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Jameson.
Trelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. It's approved. Big step completed today. Item I, motion to advertise for a public hearing and bid opening to be held at 9:05 on March 8 in the boardroom 201 of Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed fiscal year 2023 Seal Coat Project in various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anybody want to comment on this at all? Kathy? No? All right, any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item J, discussion on county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19.
Good morning, Board. Nafisa Bonya, Blackhawk County Public Health.
Morning.
Good morning. Um, so since uh February 18th, we've seen 37 um positive cases. So we're still on, on the decline, so that's good. Um, 71.2% of the Blackhawk County residents, um, aged 12 and over have, have at least um received one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. And 66.8% um are fully vaccinated. Um, and the 26.2% of 5 to 11-year-olds are vaccinated in Blackhawk County um and have at least received one dose, and the 21.5% are fully vaccinated. When we look at our um vaccine data for the month of um February, um, children 18 and under account for 20% of the cases. Adults 19 um through 39 account for 35 um percent of the cases. Um, this is um in comparison to the 43% of cases we saw um in January. Um, I also shared um with you all um, like, a mailer um that um we have sent out. I believe it was delivered to the post office on Monday, um, but this is going out to all 60, about 60,000 households here in Blackhawk County. Um, this was funded through our equity funds. Um, it was to provide information in regards to vaccine, our services, um, and also if you see in front, there's a barcode where people can access this in Spanish, French, um, and Bosnian. Um, so we're um just continue to do um extensive outreach so that people understand um our services and also um how to help people navigate some of the services they need in the county. Any questions for me?
Well, I guess my comments can fall under this or on item number 10, but I think we need to just start discussing uh this bonus pay that the sheriff brought up. But I know Dr. Inbonia has brought it up in the past with us. I agree that it's unfair that uh some of our other employees aren't realizing this financial benefit. The question I have for Mr. Perry is, could we utilize ARP funds for such a program?
I, I gotta think this should be an agenda item if we're going to have a discussion about uh, about bonus pay.
I, uh, this needs to be on the agenda for next week then, and I want uh affected department heads that this impacts to be prepared to provide input, answer, and answer questions.
Thank you.
Great.
Any questions?
No, not particularly. I have a question, I guess, regarding this item for the supervisors. I thought about asking it last week.
Mm-hmm.
Is, do we all feel, and I'd want your opinion on as well, Nafisa, that it's necessary to continue having a discussion on county preparedness and possible updates as a separate item on our agenda? Since we could do it in the updates portion of, I guess, the agenda or not, I guess, if the supervisors hadn't said, I just wondered.
I don't think that, myself, I don't think it's necessary to have this on the agenda any longer. We can, if we have questions of Dr. Inbonia, we can email her call or whatever. And uh, if any of us feels it's necessary, we can bring it back to, on the agenda.
And I can provide any additional COVID-related in the health, um, within the department head sections. I can do that to you.
Mr. Little, Mr. Schwartz, have you got any comments or what your thoughts are?
About time to leave.
Mr. Little?
Yeah, they can put it in anywhere. It really doesn't make much difference. She gives a good update every week. If you can put it under public comments, seem like we have a lot of discussion there every week.
More to come. Okay, thank you, Nafisa. That's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to any reports or information from the board. Mr. Little or Mr. Schwartz?
I'd just like to make a comment. Sunday's paper, it added on a fellow elected official. I went through different emotions when I read that. First was disappointment and finally disgusted. I kind of really thought it was character assassination, to be honest with you. Craig White doesn't always say the right things that he wants to, and he isn't always politically correct. But the bottom line is, he's human, just like the rest of us, and he makes mistakes. Craig White is a longtime veteran, served in Vietnam 50 years ago, and to this day is still working and helping veterans, serving on different organizations. Commander in Evans Hill, the memorial state, or memorial hall over there, he helps organize that for the call of the deceased veterans. He's co-founder of the Honor Flight. Thousands of veterans got to go on that flight. Forty years plus working in hospice as a volunteer. Just two weeks ago, was picking up some lady that had no family or no friends, and she couldn't drive to take her to a doctor's appointment. He may not come across a lot, but is saying the right words. But I, I honestly believe that he is truly a good man, a good veteran, has been a lifelong resident of Blackhawk County. I don't know if he's running for reelection. There wasn't even a hint of, of politics being played there, also mentioning three months before the uh primary. I don't know if he's running, but if he is, I will support him. And I hope the veterans of this county stand up and support Craig White. The families and friends of the Honor Flight, or their loved ones, their veterans who went to Washington, DC, stand up for Craig White. And most importantly, all the people that he's touched their lives over 40 some years and were working with hospice. And again, you got to keep in mind, we're all human, we all make mistakes, and we say things sometimes that we shouldn't. But I don't think that type of an article was warranted for elected officials at Blackhawk County.
Thank you for your comments. Chris, have you got anything you would like to speak to, to the reports or information from the board?
No, thank you.
Dan?
The roads are going to get ugly. I just think people need to slow down, stay home, drive cautious, see, whatever. But just be aware that it's supposed to get bad from what I hear.
Well, this is really kind, not off topic, because we've talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but um, I think it was like two, two weeks ago, we had the Elk Run, and Raymond Mayor's here during, and spoke during public comments. And at that time, I could be wrong on the date because you talked about putting the item back on the agenda. And yesterday you and I talked briefly, and I think you said perhaps next week it would be on the agenda? Just clear, uh, March 1st, or, or is it a different date? I just want to be sure, I guess, that we have that, and I'll tell you why.
I don't think it's been solidified yet.
Oh, okay.
It's my understanding, they were going to talk to some, talk to other supervisors personally, and then we uh would play it by ear and decide when we should put it on the agenda. I don't think next week is, I think that's, it's too soon.
Okay.
Because other priorities are popping up. I want to prioritize these projects.
All right. And the reason I was asking is because, and I'm sure we've all been contacted by the same ones, but since that discussion and since the article came out, um, we have heard from uh other communities such as Evansdale and Laporte and Gilbertville. And I think for them, they were questioning if it was something to be on March 1st, they would be a part of the conversation or discussion and happy to talk about their projects. Um, and I said we could get back to them on that as far as what that date and time was. So that's what I wanted to make sure if we were, since it was next week, that we would notify them. Um, it sounds like there are a couple more wastewater treatment projects and some other public buildings. But I think it was, as we said, there's many needs out in the county. And if we were looking to assist communities, they wanted to make sure that we were aware of their needs too. So we can get back to them on that then. And the other question, I guess, is just directed to you, particularly because I think last week or the week before, the catalytic converters came up.
Ah, yes.
And I didn't know if you were still planning to have more research and discussion on that.
No, I want to see what the state does. Uh, uh, Ryan and the sheriff gave us some great information. I hope the state pursues this and it passes into law, but it looks like they're on the right track. And I'm actually optimistic that it's going to pass, and it'd be a great tool to try to head this off, because it just seems like a logical and sensible approach.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I just thought too.
I'm gonna hit the pause button right now.
If we needed more research, I wanted to know I should be, what I should be looking at, that's all. Well, if there's nothing else to come before the board then, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. The motion, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.